Still with me is waiting.
Counselor, I can kind of be your.
Marcus, yes, Marcus, go ahead and start the meeting.
I'll be, I'll be a Vanna White. It's okay, Melvin, Counselor Edwards.
Eventually, maybe I'll get it to work right. But anyway, this is, I'm calling the order of of the General Government Committee. I'm Melvin Edwards, I'm chairman of the committee. I apologize for my technical difficulties, but I can't see who's on the meeting as it is right now. I'm trying to do something different, but nothing's responding.
That's all right. Now, we can, I can just introduce folks. With you, Counselor.
Please, go, go right ahead, Marcus.
All right, I'm just gonna go by the list of participants here. Thank you all for joining. So I'll start with the counselors. Counselor Michael Fenton, can you just introduce yourself for the record, please?
Hi, everybody. Michael Fenton, City Council Award Two.
All right, I see Counselor Sean Curran.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. City Councilor Sean Curran.
I see Counselor Tim Allen.
Hi, everybody. Tim Allen, Counselor for Ward Seven.
All right, and I am Marcus Williams, President of the Springfield City Council and Counselor Ward Five. The list of participants here that I see, I'll start with David Maynard. Can you just introduce yourself for the record, please?
Greetings, folks. This is David Maynard, Chairman of the Association of Black Business and Professionals.
I see, let's see, Kareem.
Good afternoon, everyone. Kareem Kibody, Office of Congressman Richard Neal.
Thank you. I see Timothy Sheen.
Tim Sheen, Chief Development Officer, City of Springfield.
Thanks, Tim. I see John Lewis.
So, yes, John Lewis from Berkshire County, actually. Chairman of the Black Economic Council and also CEO of Resetting the Project.
Thank you. I see Jennifer Little Greer.
Jennifer Little Greer, Executive Director for the Minority Construction Council.
Thank you, Jennifer. I see George Mack.
George Mack, resident of Springfield, Mass, retired DOC. Also a member of the Association of Black Business and Professional.
Thank you, George. I see Bernard Thomas.
Bernard Thomas, Board Chair of Minority Construction Council.
Thank you, Bernard. I see Richard Griffin.
Richard Griffin, Vice Chair of the Association of Black Business Professionals.
Thank you. I see Lamont Clemmons.
You're muted.
You're muted.
I was hoping you guys are great lip readers. All right, so let me, let me, I'm Lamont Clemmons, Cello Painting. A member of the Association of Black Businesses and Professionals, also a board member and treasurer of Black Economic Council in Massachusetts as well, so that's.
All right, thank you, Lamont. I see Katisha Galishaw.
Katisha Galishaw, Board Member of the Association of Black Business and Professionals.
Thank you, Ms. Galishaw. I see Michelle Smith, I believe. Is Michelle Smith on the call?
Yep, I'm here, sorry. I'm Michelle Smith Cotto. I am an in-house attorney for Community Health Center in Hartford, and I'm a board member of the Association of Black Business and Professionals.
Appreciate it, Michelle. I see Daquan Harris.
Daquan Harris is muted. He's on my team.
All right, thank you. I see Daylon Greer. Is there a Daylon Greer on the call?
He's also on my team. They're muted.
All right, thank you. I see Dr. Katrina Banks, I believe that is. Dr. Katrina Banks.
Good afternoon, Dr. Katrina Banks, Physical Therapist and Board Member of the Association of Black.
Thank you, doctor. I see Darryl Moss.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Darryl Moss is here.
All right, thank you, Darryl. And I see our friend in the office here with the screen name Theo Kleef.
Yeah, Theo Theo Kleef, Deputy Procurement Officer and Associate City Solicitor.
Appreciate it. At this time, Melvin, I can pass it to you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you. I was gonna try to be as efficient as I can. I am Chairman of the Responsible Employer Ordinance Committee. I believe on this call also is Tim Allen, who has been on the committee for many years as well. I've been chair for 12 years, working and having oversight of municipal construction. And most of my work has been with the general contractors and some subs to make sure that minorities, women residents, and most recently veterans are having access to construction jobs. I think we are now at a point where the city administration has worked with us to a point where we're very confident in what we have for structure to do that and move that forward. But the next step for us is to expand minority contractors access to municipal construction and eventually to be able to expand out into private construction done with public money. So I, I believe that Mrs. Greer or Mr. Maynard should probably start to speak. The purpose of this meeting is to get my colleagues on the city council an opportunity to hear from Mr. Maynard and from Mrs. Greer. I believe that there's some conversations that have already gone on with members of Procurement Department of the City of Springfield, and we would just like to start the dialogue so that we can help facilitate a better set of standards that would allow for broader access to the construction trades. So either Mr. Maynard, and I apologize because I'm not able to see anything. I'm, I'm looking at myself talking and my screen just says video preview waiting, and I'm not exactly sure what I needed to do to rectify this. So either Mr. Maynard or Mrs. Greer. Could either one of you start, please? And I believe Focus Springfield will allow for Miss Greer, when she's ready to take the screen and show her PowerPoint.
Yeah, could, is there a way Focus Springfield could make me the part-time host so I could share our presentation?
I have a screen sharing turned on, my friend. You're good to go.
So I take it everybody can see my screen?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Well, now that we got that working, that's good. So greetings, everyone. Obviously, we are here, as Melvin said, thank you for the intro, Melvin, to discuss a continual and reoccurring problem that's gone on for a very, very long time that needs to end involving inequality and the contractor and construction trade when it comes to black contractors. That's the bad news. The good news is that we've done a lot of work on this. And in my mind, we're very close to the finish line, to being able to have a better day for everybody. That we can all come together and, you know, make a difference. And so that we won't be talking about this situation in the way that we're talking about it now, a year from now. So with that, I'm gonna go give a small overview, small presentation. Just going over what I'll go over real quickly. I'll talk to you for anybody that doesn't know about what the Association of Black Business and Professionals is. What is the current issue? The timeline that got us to this meeting and what is our proposed solution so that we can then segue into Ms. Little Greer, who will take you into more detail about what she does. And then continue the conversation and the discussion, trying to move us forward towards the resolution. So what is the Association of Black Business and Professionals? We're a Springfield-based 501(c)(3) with a mission to promote and sustain black businesses, professionals, programs, initiatives in the areas and markets that we serve through networking, advocacy, and education. Obviously, we're here about advocacy. We are advocating right now for our black contractors. The association hosts on its website, everybody should know, so I'll give a shameless plug, a black business listing that has around about 200 local black businesses that have joined the listing and that we support and advocate for. Additionally, there are hundreds of black professionals in the region that we also speak to and that we also serve and speak for. So this part of our advocacy, although we have many fronts, as I said, is around black contractors. This brings us to our issue. It's a national and Springfield problem. As you can see on your screen, there was a recent study published in the Boston Globe that showed from Boston, over five years, 1.2% of $2.1 billion is given to black and brown-owned businesses. In Springfield, we don't have granular data to specifically indicate for black contractors or black and brown contractors, but we know it to be an issue. The way we know that to be an issue is that our contractors, some of which are in the room today, Lamont Clemmons from Excel painting, as well as others that have joined us on several, several communications with cities and city and meetings. We are the city through the procurement office also agreed that the amount of usage of black contractors was relatively small. So we can't continue to do that, as obviously it denies black contractors capital, tries to match and deprives them. So we are here to, to kind of go over our proposal as to how to solve this issue. A quick timeline, back in July, met with Lawrence Tabalo and Theo from the procurement office over at the Boys and Girls Club over on Acorn Street to discuss this specific issue. From that meeting, we came away with one of our takeaways, that one of the prospective answers was to develop a list, a comprehensive list of black contractors whereby the procurement office had this list. And therefore, they could utilize this list when city jobs and bids were sent out. There are, you know, tracking from city workers, but as far as black contractors getting the G C jobs or getting a large percentage of those jobs, it's just not happening. So our first solution was a prospective list. September, we met with the Minority Construction Council, as I had heard from about Jennifer through a mutual acquaintance. The Minority Construction Council does something a little bit different. Jennifer, even previous to being the Executive Director for Minority Construction Council throughout New England, helped black contractors in getting their licensing, in getting positioned for jobs and for benefits. So she was well, you know, has good acumen, so we had a conversation with her. She's actually helped contractors in Springfield. So she runs the Minority Construction Council of Hartford, which you'll talk about shortly. But we felt that instead of a list, why not leverage what we have in the area, just down the street, and bring them to bear here in Springfield, have an expansion here in Springfield whereby they would house black contractors. They would be able to educate black contractors, get them licensing, and get them all the requirements for all the various jobs, as well as having the city use them as a mechanism to send these jobs over. Right now, we have a problem where a lot of people say they didn't even know that there was a job to bid on. So that solved a lot of problems and was much, a much more comprehensive solution than a list. So in October, we had a follow-up meeting with Lauren, I'm sorry that I spelled her name there wrong, down at City Hall, where we went over the initial kind of structure as to how it would be. Lauren and Theo also were in the meeting, and they said, you know what? This is something that could happen. So we had exploratory presentation in December. Also in December, we met with Melvin Edwards via teleconference, which basically brings us to today, whereby we need support. You know, I think a lot of you might be saying, okay, well, what, what can I do? How can I jump on board? We need support. These things take both funding and they take our city advocates and representatives saying and pushing them. And so that's why we're here to you today. I will not take too much more of your time. I will defer to Jennifer so that she can go in more detail over the Minority Construction Council and what they offer. So you have a complete understanding of what we're trying to bring to the city. Jennifer, you're up.
Okay, let's see. Okay, just checking to see if everyone's able to see my screen. Is that a yes? Okay, awesome. All right, I first of all would like to thank Councilman Melvin Edwards, as well as the Black Business and Professionals for allowing us to be here today to talk about the Minority Construction Council's offerings. This presentation that I'm gonna show you talks about what we do, but I'm also gonna show what services we provide to the City of Hartford and the Procurement Unit. This is a little bit of information about the organization. It was started back in 2002. We became incorporated in 2005. We are governed by a board of minority contractors. We currently have 11 board members. Our mission is to support ethnic minority contractors with advocacy, support, development opportunities, as well as connections with our corporate members. This is a little bit of information about myself. I am, as David mentioned, I was the MBE, MBE Outreach Director, as well as Compliance Director with the Minority Construction Council for six years, as well as I've been a compliance officer for a financial institution and a wealth management officer. So I'm fully aware of assisting minority contractors. There's some information on my background in other organizations that I participate in. Okay, what I would like to highlight is what we do with the City of Hartford. We run a program that is called the Small Contractor and Minority and Women-Owned Business Technical Assistance Program, where we assist the city-based contractors with all of their needs. We provide one-on-one technical assistance, contracting opportunity, all of the City of Hartford's development that is done through our organization so that we're able to host that and put that on for the contractors. We assist with assist the contractors with obtaining their certifications, whether it's with the City of Hartford, the State of Connecticut, Department of Transportation, and any other designations that they're looking for. For workshops, what we do is what we do is we assist the contractors with establishing their business, making sure that they have the opportunity for bonding. So we're gonna hold a workshop, but then we're also gonna provide that assistance to the contractors. We are a partner of the Federal OSHA. So when it comes down to our contractors and their employees having the opportunity and needing any type of training, we are that arm that is putting that on for the City of Hartford. Here are a list of the additional services that we provide aside from City of Hartford MBE certification, State of Connecticut. We also certify and assist the contractors with obtaining their State of Connecticut Construction Pre-qualification Designation, the DBE Disadvantaged Business Interstate Certification, Hub Zone Certification, registering the businesses in the SAM's System of Award Management, helping them to obtain their Dun &amp; Brad number, as well as assisting them with preparing a bid and the training that they need so that they're able to execute and be successful when it comes time to their bidding. Another thing that we have added on since COVID is we are a state technical assistance partner for allowing, for assisting our minority businesses with obtaining funding through SBA, through the state, and the various municipalities. Something that we do that's very unique, because we saw that there was a need. We started this program in conjunction with the Department, the Connecticut Department of Transportation. We started a capacity building boot camp where we take 10 contractors at a time and we give them a hands-on 10-hour training on various areas. And these are my results from 2019. Due to, it's something that we do in person. So due to COVID, we pulled back just for a moment on that. So come next month, we're gonna start again because the contractors, as well as our corporate partners said, Jen, this is something that the contractors need. So we are going back into implementing with 10 contractors. We're starting again next month with that. Here, I also have listed our 2020 results for the City of Hartford. So for our City of Hartford, we, they utilize us through the, the funding of community block grants. So under our community block grant, we served last year 56 city Hartford-based contractors. We provided seven bonding liability, health insurance, financial literacy workshops for 150 City of Hartford. So I'm specifying City of Hartford because when you utilize community block grant, it has to be for designated area. So that, and we provide reporting around that. We do not include anyone else but those that are in that subset. So we do do monthly reporting for the HUD funding. We provided 16 development training workshops that included 300 MBEs that also included whether it was City of Hartford residents as well as contractors. We held eight construction safety workshops. Those workshops consisted of your OSHA tents, your silica, your lead awareness, and also your boom and scissor lift and other trainings that evolved that entailed that safety. Contracting opportunities. We put together a, we have a weekly newsletter that we send out. We have 2,020 readers that read that. Those are not all contractors, minority contractors, but in that that our readers consist of minority contractors all from across the state, corporate members, as well as our partners, municipalities, government officials, and anyone that may have a project that engages with our organization. We allow our, we allow project owners to list their project opportunities in our newsletter. Right now, we are also listing Springfield projects in, because once we started doing work with, with Home City Development, other of our corporate partners said, hey, you're in Springfield. We want to list our Springfield opportunities as well. These are our results for 2020. In regards to our bid opportunities that we post in our newsletter for contractors, there were 1,993 bid opportunities, 40 contracting opportunities via Zoom or in person. We also host a number of virtual outreaches for corporate partners that are working on state and municipal projects. We had 852 MBE contractors attend our event on all, across all avenues, whether it's in person or virtually this, this past year. And this year, we're happy to say we were able to assist 42 businesses with referrals from contracting opportunities. Now, these are dollars from Connecticut, and there were about $6,769,900 that the contractors were able to receive from contracting opportunities that we connected them with. Resource, resource partners that we have. We have Mass Hiring Springfield, People Radio Springfield, Urban League of Springfield, Massachusetts Small Business Development Center, Massachusetts Procurement Technical Center, Federal OSHA, and of course, Black Business and Professionals. For publications that we are currently utilizing are African-American Point of View, LaVos Hispana, Inquiring News, The Metro Record Newspaper. A couple pitches from along the side on this particular slide are from the Brookings outreach that we jointly held with with Home City Development, and this is the Brookings School Project. I mentioned the trainings that we had here in the middle. You see, this is a scissor lift training that's happening. We do partner with our partner agencies and corporate members to make sure those trainings do happen for the contractors. And down here, you see OSHA training happening, and up in the top, it is a outreach on branding your business happening. Off to the side, we have listed a number of our partners that are our agency partners that we work with. City of Hartford, City of Bridgeport, Town of Bloomfield, Connecticut Department of Transportation, Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunity, Small Business Development Center, the Connecticut Procurement Technical Assistance Center, the Department of Administrative Services, federal, and Connecticut OSHA, HEPCO, Connecticut Construction Industry Association, Associated General Contractors of Connecticut, and Associated Builders and Contractors of Connecticut. Some of our signature events. Annually, we hold a partnership award dinner for our contractors and our corporate members and the partners. We really believe in partnering with, with our minority contractors, with our corporate members, and this is the time we recognize those partners who are working with us. In addition to the awards dinner, we hold an annual expo. The very first slide that I showed you was a ribbon-cutting ceremony where we held our expo. Normally, we hold it inside. This year, due to COVID, we held it outside under a tent. It was very well received, and it was one of the first events. Free after COVID, we were the ones that were okay, said, okay, we're gonna step out and do this. It's gonna be all right. We're gonna have it outside. Another thing that we do is we hold a annual business card exchange dinner, all of the, not dinner, business card exchange. And what happens with that business card exchange, we have a raffle. During the raffle, all the proceeds from those raffles do go to fund scholarships for local technical schools in, in Connecticut. Two weeks ago, we held our legislative initiative. This is where we focus on the agenda of the minority contractors, what we're looking to impact. Unfortunately, in Connecticut right now, our designation of MBE, Minority Business Enterprise, consists of ethnic minority and women-owned businesses. So what we're, we're looking for this year is to have a disparity study funded so that we can split out women and minority-owned businesses. And Massachusetts is ahead of the game because you already had that, and I was at the table at that time when that took place, so I'm happy to say that. We host monthly membership meetings. Right now, we're holding it virtually. I believe we're gonna probably keep that virtual virtually because it allows for contractors all across to come and connect in with projects and opportunities. At the membership meeting, we allow for prime or general contractors or project owners to come and talk about the opportunities that they have. And that way, the contractors are able to see what's going on and if this is a project that they're looking to bid on. Okay, our membership base. Okay, our membership base, um, I know this number is dated. It says one sixty-five. We are over a hundred and sixty-five, um, minority businesses. And, um, as I mentioned, our membership consists of minority businesses in the construction industry. It consists of corporate members. Also, um, it consists of our corporate members who are in the private and public sector. Here are a list of our corporate members, and these are the corporate members who are in the public sector or private sector and public sector who engage with us as of today. We are also a partner of the Connecticut, Connecticut Department of Transportation. Um, we work with the Connecticut Department of Transportation as their ground, their feet on the ground. We assist them with, with, um, certifying the DBEs that come through their certification program. We help the, the contractors get certified. We also assist them with performing the site visits for them as well. One of the things that we do do is the Department of Transportation or the transit authorities, they somewhat got jealous when we had the construction expo. They said, what about us? So what we did was we started, um, what's called a transportation matchmaker. And at the transportation matchmaker, all of the various transit authorities come together and it gives them an opportunity to talk about what service offerings they have and what construction needs that they have. So here are a list of the transit authorities that we partner with. And we're happy to, um, to be a partner now working with Home City Development. We would love to entertain working with the city of Springfield. Um, this is a model that, um, we enjoy and take dearly. I did take the opportunity to bring my board chair on because he recruit recruited me to this organization to help, um, advance the minority contractors. So this is our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just, um, Jen, Jen, can you put that last slide back up for a second? Yeah, just so everybody's clear. So what our proposal is is for, you know, the, um, Minority Construction Council to expand and have an office in Springfield. So everything that Jen, uh, was saying was applicable to Connecticut, will be applicable to here in the surrounding areas, um, to improve. And I think Jen, you know, thank you again. And she does an amazing job and amazing work as you guys can readily see from, uh, me meeting with her and working with her in just a short time. I'm well impressed by what she's been able to do in Connecticut. And so me being from Springfield born and raised, uh, my first thought is, you know, why can't we have that here? And so, um, it's been my honor to be a part of, um, this project to try to bring that here, uh, to solve our issues so that we're not down the street literally and have issues that have been resolved up the street. So with that, uh, you know, you can, you can go back to the last slide, Jen, and I think it's open for any question.
Okay, can, uh, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, first of all, uh, Mr. Greer, thank you very much. Really, uh, informative presentation and I appreciate it. Uh, I'd like to open up the floor for some questions, but, uh, and I can't see your hands, but I believe Counselor, I mean, President Will, uh, Williams will help assist with that. Uh, but I really would like to hear something from, uh, Mr. Tim Sheen, uh, the head of, um, Economic Development for the city of Springfield, if it's an appropriate time to hear his thoughts on the presentation.
Thanks, Jen. I'm, uh, familiar with MCC, uh, based on your Norwalk, uh, involvement. And I think going back a number of years ago, uh, there was a program, uh, actually to get certification for contractors uh, that was, uh, running the city. I can't remember exactly, uh, what the year was. Um, but, uh, obviously, the work that, uh, you've done in Norwalk is, is pretty impressive with the transit district. Um, and my question back to you, um, in terms of Hartford's, uh, allocation of CDBG resources, uh, what, what is the contracted amount that you have in Hartford?
The current contracted amount we have is seventy thousand. That's the current one. We're working on a new CDBG. So it's seventy right now.
Okay, that's good to know. Uh, again, I, I think your programming is fantastic and having some level of experience with it previously, I, I would be encouraged to have it here in Springfield.
Marcus, are there any other hands raised at this point?
If folks have questions or comments, feel free to raise your hand out.
Uh, no comments from, uh, our colleagues on the council?
Uh, there are no hands, uh, that I'm seeing, but if I, if I can add a comment, uh, Councilor Chair. I will know. I, I certainly appreciate the, uh, the association of, uh, business, uh, black professionals uh, for the work that you have continued doing in the city of Springfield for quite some time. You know, at this point, I'm certainly missing the gala that takes place every year, uh, which brings us, you know, folks together to, to share the efforts being made to include, uh, for example, contractors, minority contractors, um, after projects and city, of course, go out to, to bid. So, you know, I just, uh, would continue or just, you know, wanted to give you, uh, an acknowledgement there and say that I think that the need in Springfield is great around, uh, around this topic. Essentially, you know, we, we vote on these large scaled projects and, you know, to some degree, hold those coming into the city accountable. Um, and but this, this is, this should be more than just reaching quotas, right? This should be also changing the culture of cities, um, um, and municipalities that look like Springfield that have, uh, a large offering of, of folks who are skilled, who have, um, the means and the talent to contribute to, uh, you know, some of the things that we see in the city, the, 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 the large attractions that bring folks from out of town here. Um, so that, those conversations should always be happening. And I just wanna bring, uh, thank the Chair of this General Government Subcommittee to bringing this to the forefront. And from the folks from the city, uh, Tim, for acknowledging that that's very important. And, you know, we, I'm, I'm on board and making, uh, something like that happen for the city of Springfield as well. So thank you all for your presentations and all that you continue doing.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say, um, um, have a comment if I may, if that's all right with you, um, Mr. Edwards.
Please, sir.
Springfield would be lucky to have an individual like Jennifer Little Greer. In Hartford, we recognized, the contractors recognized that we weren't getting a fair share. It's not only happening in Hartford, it's happening everywhere. And the problem is, is that we don't have the proper people to fight for us. We have the people that really claim that they wanna help. We have political people in power that can help make decisions and help put a stop to it. You have, um, um, GCs and, um, and contractors who always say that minorities aren't good enough. They don't do their paperwork, come up with a whole bunch of excuses. When the proper percentage of funding, which is supposed to be allocated even coming down to the minority contractors, they don't get their fair share. We also had to put someone in place that wasn't going to be able to try to be able, what I call, take advantage of the situation. I'm not saying that the predecessors took advantage of the situation, but I'm saying an individual like Jennifer, who is more than fair, more than above, gives more than the time that is due. I can't tell you the amount of nights on a regular basis that this lady is working in the office till ten, eleven o'clock at night. Her husband can tell you, this is, uh, you know, to me, it is not only crazy, she has developed, um, to where now the MCC is being talked about at the, uh, at the governor's level about creating the, the, um, 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 a disparity study because everybody recognized that, um, minority contractors, ethnic contractors haven't got their fair share. When you talk about, like, in Connecticut, when you talk about an ethnic contractor getting six and a quarter percent, we, you, you're lucky if you'd see two percent. So the amount of money that goes through when contractors come into your town, and the only reason why they will use minority contractors is because the council will say, this is required of you to utilize it, but when they go back out of town, they don't utilize you. It is the, it is, it is, we're not asking for handouts. We don't need handouts. We're asking for fair opportunity for our contractor, for our people to be able to work, to be able to take care of their families. And everybody can, you know, instead of begging for fish, we wanna go out fishing. That's how our people are. When the comment comes that there aren't enough contractors, there are enough contractors, but the difference between public and private, private, they get their money a lot quicker. In the public, sometimes their funding is being held up to, um, anywhere from three to six months, depending on what, what's going on. We need to hold people accountable. We need to make sure that our contractors have the proper license. We need to make sure that they have help and support to be able to do the job. Imagine if you have a contractor that is running, like, uh, say, five-man crew. The owner of that company always, he's going out checking up on the crew. By the time he comes to do his paperwork, it's hard. They need help and support. So I'm just saying, what is being done in Hartford has, is really, really helped out our contractors and being able to find cert- certifications, get them proper training, help finding funding, helping with support and resources. We didn't have that before. That wasn't happening before. And I'm just saying that those are the things that makes her very valuable, especially in Hartford and all through the state of Connecticut. Thank you.
I see, uh, Richard Griffin's hand is up. Would you like to speak, please?
Oh, yeah, um, I know we're running short on time. So I just wanted to know, um, as far as the next steps, what is the next step as, as far as, do you wanna go with the program? Um, you know, I know the CDB allocation is coming up in, uh, July. So what is it, what are the next steps? So we're not behind and we have to wait another year.
I, I'm certainly in support of this. I, I would, I, I think it's probably the question a- as far as the applications of CDB funds. Uh, Mr. Sheen, could you jump in and try to respond to that question? Is, uh, is, is it appropriate for your department to make that request? Uh, or to fill out an application for the use of CDB giant? Or is this something that we need to talk with the mayor and, and, uh, get his feelings on?
No, uh, ultimately, what we do is, uh, a notice of funding availability goes out. And then, uh, the annual action plan gets formulated based on the, the, um, allocation of funding. And within that, that annual action plan, uh, assuming, you know, we're, we're collectively with the council and the administration supportive of this moving forward, which I certainly would encourage. Um, w- we would allocate i- into the annual action plan resources, uh, uh, for this purpose.
Um, mi- mi- would you be, uh, uh, would it be appropriate for myself and for Counselor, I mean, for City Council President Williams, uh, perhaps for Council Williams, to reach out to the mayor, arrange for a meeting for with us so that, uh, I'm certainly in support of it. And I believe most of my colleagues, where I see, uh, Council Allen's hand is up next. And I'd be, and he's a, uh, co-member of the REO, which has been doing this type of work for many years. I'd love, certainly like to hear his comments as, as well. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thanks, uh, thanks, Counselor Edwards. Uh, yeah, great, great presentation. I'm Tim Allen. I've been on with Melvin on the REO committee for, I don't know, I've been on at least five years. I'd say maybe six. And we're always looking for resources like what was just talked about. So, I, I mean, the whole thing of the CDBG funding and approaching the mayor, that's a great track to run on. Um, I would say we could consider having, I don't, I don't wanna get ahead of myself here. Other members of the REO, there's five of us. Melvin and I are two of them, two of the members. Um, there's a union member, there's a city hall department, and two city hall people are, are the other members. And they're not on this call, but we have a meeting next Tuesday. Um, Theo, you're, you're on the REO. I don't wanna get ahead of myself. You're involved in the contracting and the bidding and stuff. You know a lot more about it than I do. But I think we should be assertive in inviting these people to come to our meeting Tuesday. It's a Zoom meeting. Explain what they did today to the members of the REO, uh, and any other such activities like that. I mean, this is, sounds too good and it's an opportunity. We, we're always struggling with this. We're always trying to hit the numbers. MGM comes in and hits all the numbers and, and not all the current pride, other projects do. So I appreciate what you brought to the table here and, uh, whatever the appropriate thing to do is. I've gotta scoot out to do some driving for a grandchild, but, um, but I, I'm in support of, of, don't move in far, further along on this.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Count, um, Lamont, I see your hand is raised. Would you like to make a comment or ask a question?
Yeah, I just had a, a couple of things, a few different comments and questions. So that's the first thing would be the, with respect to the REO. So is the REO still focused just simply, just on, on the workforce? Or is it focused? Cause I remember I used to come to the meetings like five years ago as well, um, with, uh, with, uh, Fury and, uh, pretty much all the same people, it seems. But, uh, is it, was it, but at that time, as a business owner, it was, you know, we were hitting all of our workforce goals pretty seamlessly because we're, we're in the community and we, quite frankly, we, we just try. I mean, it's not really hard to hit the, the goals if you try, um, as a business personally, uh, from a minority perspective. So is it just the, um, is it just the workforce that we're talking about? Or do we have something in place where, you know, we're talking about the, the actual kind, like what Jennifer Little Greer is doing when she's introducing contractors to home city housing for a project so that they're gonna do where the contractors could actually, uh, benefit from that?
Well, actually, the, to try to answer the question, the REO's responsibility is vertical construction, uh, municipal construction, uh, vertical, no linear. So we don't do any road construction. We don't deal with any parks. Uh, to this point, we are working basically on employees being hired by, through the general contractor to subs. And that's where I ha- I get the weekly payrolls and have oversight of reviewing those and, and monitoring that. The, the, by having this relationship with this, uh, association is now to expand and eliminate the excuse of that we're, there are not enough minority contractors or the certain trades are not available for the GCs to access. Um, the other benefit of this relationship, hopefully, moving forward, uh, benefits the city. Uh, Thielis, our attorney Thielis can, I'll say the fact that the city and the taxpayers benefit when there's multiple bidders for contracts. Right now, unfortunately, it always costs the city more than some of the, uh, private construction to do work. But one of the problems is we have a limited number of contractors that are bidding. Pandemic has helped a little bit, but reality is, is that when we get, expand the, uh, the bidding pool, it benefits the taxpayers. So that does make it something that's advantageous with even those who are not interested in, um, supporting minority businesses. But, uh, the bottom line is, is that more bidding drives down the cost and gives more opportunities. And when we're fighting with white contractors to try to get the numbers of employees on the site, the most important thing that we can do is, is that we recognize that when the owner of the bills, the business or construction company is a minority, they have a sense of comfort of who they hire and they have relationships with other contractors and subs. So it makes it much more advantageous for them or have an expectation that they're going to be able to meet those goals as well. Um, so I'm, to, to your point, um, the way the legislation is written around the REO is primarily, uh, the employees. And we've had very little influence over who the contractors are. And Theo has done a great job explaining how the state laws and federal laws relate to the bidding process that kinda limits and ties our hands. But I'm hopeful to this meeting and the meeting that I hope to follow up with, with the mayor and with my council president Williams, um, and possibly, uh, Council Allen as well, with the administration is now expanded beyond just making boots on the ground that are carrying bags of sand and bricks. We want to have an opportunity for the owners of construction companies who may, who are minorities to have a fair chance at bidding. And I think this is a good step in that direction. Uh, I was very encouraged to hear, um, Mr. Sheen be, be well receptive of it and to be knowledgeable of some of the work that Mrs. Greer has already done. Uh, I had a very extensive conversation earlier this morning. I had a very extensive conversation earlier this morning with Mr. Tom Kegelman from Home City, who's who spoke glowingly about her as well. And the resources that have been afforded Home City with the construction around the Brooking School. So I think this, as far as next. I think to answer your question is is that the REO is kind of is is more or less going to be continue to be more about employees. But we would like to expand it and look at having some influence on on what would be beneficial to this association and the taxpayers as well.
Exactly. So I wanted to hear that. I wanted everybody to hear that. So obviously, we we know that the main thing here is they're saying, this is always, you know, this is always, you know, pretty much the the scenario, which is. You know, it's directed towards the the state policy that they have in place. So just everybody on the call, let's make sure we pay attention to that because we really do need to modify those state policies that are in there and in in place with respect to that. The second thing is that the REO doesn't deal with. So we confirmed that it only deals with workforce, which is an important issue as well. And I think it's a, you know, obviously a great thing that should continue, but it should be an expansion or a separate, completely separate entity that maybe Jennifer Little Greer and her team, I would hope, would be able to come in. In in the city would bring them, bring them on to really spearhead that whole side of it as well. Obviously, they're going to add a tremendous amount of value with training and workforce, getting businesses, you know, getting people to OSHA tens and things like that. But getting people, those certifications are amazing, huge, eight A, I mean, a lot of them are are great to get in companies. Those are going to be, is a huge value add, which is great. But I just want to have an, you know, I think there should be a separate arm. The REO, the workforce is completely different from owning, from being a minority business owner. Where we know we can hit the goals pretty seamlessly because our comfort level with our own, our own, the people, you know, individuals we grew up with for the most part. So we know we can hit those goals, but it's all about really just getting the companies in and the goals will start to really start to be met. But we just gotta, we have to be able to do that. So I think that there should be definitely some organization that kind of sees that and tracks it. Our my other board that I'm on with Beckma, where obviously the numbers are egregious that we just seen at the beginning of this conversation. I don't know if anybody's as disgusted with with that with those numbers as I am. But I mean, it's it's in it's insanity for 1.2% of $2.1 billion to go in this direction. So it's it's just, you know, it's something that we really, really need to address now. I've been having this conversation for five or six years since I've been in Massachusetts. And it's the same thing over and over and over again. And I think we we got a, we got a huge opportunity here with with Tim being 100% on board. Obviously, he just agreed with what's going on. It's egregious. I don't think that anyone, I think, you know, I don't think that anyone would look at these numbers and even though they're not ours, I'm sure it's pretty close in Springfield. As it was in Boston, for for individuals to to figure out some plan of action or literally have a a team that could deep dive in there with Jennifer Little Greer or whomever. To be able to really deep dive on these issues because they're making some serious headway in in Boston on it with Beckma. So definitely want to, you know, kind of drive some 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 real measurable results with some of these conversations. I think it's just important. I don't mean to be on my soapbox, but. We were a minority company that we should be, you know, we're doing pretty, we're doing pretty okay, but we should be way further along with the with the amount of projects. We're doing MGM projects. We've done Indian motorcycle building. We just finished. We're doing 300 units and. You know, we're, you know, we're we're doing some pretty large projects and have been in place. And that's a lot thanks to people like Jennifer Little Greer that I've met when she was with the Greater New Orleans Fire Diversity Council years and years ago. As well, that was just helping us to get get to the point where we could build the capacity to do these types of projects, which are ready for. But even now with that capacity, there's still constraints for us to get in there, which should be impossible at this day and age. So sorry, I don't want to go too too far, but.
Thanks, Lamont.
A little bit of that out.
Okay, nobody's going to try to refute anything that you're saying, Lamont. And I agree with you 100%. The thing is, as far as. And I'm going to ask Theo to speak on the procurement process in terms of bidding. I think if there is nobody who I wouldn't expect anybody, at least on this call, is going to push back. On the value of possibly having somebody like Mrs. Greer working for us. But I also would like the Attorney Theolies, if he wouldn't mind, just to speak on the bidding. But where I do see it is I benefit also in terms of the REO and what the work that that does. Is is that when the GC is the one who actually tells does the, he gets the the original bid, but it's the subs. And his access to the pool of subs that are a part of this association would also make it easier for people and for the companies of minority construction to be able to get bids as well. Whereas, as I've said, when you're building, you know, for example, the building of a school in Springfield, which is one of the bigger projects this city will undertake. The general contractor is hiring a painting contractor like Osalo, but also hiring a plumber, heating, lighting, glasswork, all types of contractors that might benefit as minority owners. So if if it is not, if it's an appropriate time, attorney of the least are you on? And could you we speak a little bit about what's been stated and your thoughts? To the bidding process and what we've had conversations about in the REO about the general contractor and his responsibility or access to minority contractors.
Right. So I I have a twofold interest in here, you know, wearing my REO hat, I would like this organization to be in there because it eliminates a lot of excuses on behalf of the GC. You know, you you have a pool of contractors out there and now we'd have an educated, sophisticated pool of contractors that would be fully certified, fully able to participate in all of these projects. And, you know, we'd have, we'd be able to develop some kind of list, working with Jennifer. To better, you know, here, when we did the REO over again, we had a list of organizations. Many of them were defunct. Many of them were old and outdated. And I think that getting an organization like this in the city would go a long way in bridging that gap between the labor pool and the contractors. And you'd have a lot less room for excuses as far as that front. As far as the procurement side, there is no downside to having a more educated. You know, ready to go pool of potential bidders with construction. And I'm not going to hijack this meeting, but. Tim and I have been in conversations with some of was a organization called the Anchor Communities. And it's they had gone out and it's companies like MGM, HCC, City of Springfield, those type of organizations that are doing similar type stuff. But outside of the purview of construction, which is where I think I'd like to go next. But as far as this goes, just for construction, I think it's great. I I can say that not having the purse strings for CBDG fund money, I don't really know how that works. But there there isn't a downside that I'm aware of from this presentation. It's the second time I've seen it. I'm still quite impressed.
Well, thank you, Theo. And actually, I think in terms of next steps, because we're going to try to, I know everybody has other things going on. But I'd like to just say, in terms of next steps, my intention is to follow up with my colleagues and make a have a conversation with the mayor. And his and his appropriate entities that he suggested we talk to, perhaps follow up with Tim Sheen as well. And I welcome and invite all interested parties to attend the REO meeting, which will be on the 16th of February at 2 o'clock. And it will also be a Focus Springfield meeting. You're welcome to come if Mrs. Greer and if she's available, I'd love for her to attend and present it once again. To the entire committee in attendance. And I don't think anybody, I'm not hearing anything that suggests that people are not taking this seriously. I don't see the value of it. I'm not going, I think the perfect marriage of the work that has been going on for years related to the REO and it's just a continuing expansion. Unfortunately, the REO has primarily been geared toward, as I said, municipal construction. But my colleagues and I have been having conversations privately about, you know, we know that there's tax incentives that go to private companies. And sometimes the amount of money doesn't trigger oversight by the REO. We've talked about state historic tax credits and other things that may be need help with the legislature that would give us some type of oversight. But I see no downfall, down anything negative about the potential of Mrs. Greer working within the city's boundaries. Even collaboratively with the city of Hartford and the state of Connecticut as well. The bottom line is is that more people working and more circulation of money. Through the hands of people who live in the general area, it's just a win win for everybody involved. That being said, are there any other questions or comments before I kind of try to wrap this up?
Sorry, I just want to give a couple of quick solutions real quickly towards what was mentioned. So one solution is with one thing that would solution, not a solution, but would add value is that the. When they have these big multi-billion dollar projects, there's a pre qualification list that they send out to certain, you know, whoever groups get them. The pre qualification list and then you got to put, you know, you submit and then you get pre qualified to build a school. So once you get pre qualified to build a school, whoever's on that list, the only people that can get in. So later on, when the actual bid comes out and my, you know, and any contractor comes in and tries to get in, especially at MBE, they wouldn't be able to because they didn't reach that pre qualification list. So definitely let's make an effort to get that list out to the Association of Black Businesses or Jennifer Little Greer as well, so that she can have those individuals in there. And then also there's a loophole that people probably never want to talk about, but I'm I just researched the research. But like, even when they come in. So let's say you have a contractor that's nowhere near their goals as they are on pretty much every contract or school bill from MBE perspective. There's a the first level painter who was on that pre qualification list, or let's just use painting just for an example, because it's my wheelhouse, easy to talk about. But let's say that first that first tier painter that got their first prime contract is actually able to sub out some of that work to us to meet those goals under no penalty. It's a, it's, there's levels to it. So it's a tertiary. I mean, there's, there's just because it's not a first tier level. So they're actually able to do that, but the the general contractor would have to be on board and the city would have to be influencing, you know, say, hey, look, you need to talk to your, you know, to your painting company about. The fact that they're not going to reach their goals and here's a solution by subbing out this amount to a certain thing. Same thing with HVAC, same thing with every single trade, which is a possibility as well. So I just wanted to throw that out there for hopefully in the in the future.
Thank you, Lamont. Everybody has, I believe, is pretty accessible. The contact information for myself and other members of the city council. Our emails are always our first initial and last named at SpringfieldCityHall.com. Please feel free to reach out to us to email. Any correspondence and contact information or things we need can always be sent to the city council's office and it will be. And that can be circulated. And my cell number is four one three three four eight eight zero three six for anybody who wants to talk to me personally or directly. And as far as the the last time in terms of outreach, we have just recently made a request to procurement. That all the bids come out, get circulated to all city councillors when it's appropriate and so that they, you know, we can be, you know, be aware. And we could share and I'm going to ask also, you know, from attorney Theolies. That the association gets a copy of all those bids as they go out as well. I think if you're a member of the and related to Mrs. Greer, I'm sure you're getting better access than independent contractors that are not a part of your association. So that's probably not a will not be a problem going forward. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's time. Once again, the invitation has been extended to attend REO meeting on next Tuesday at 2 o'clock through Zoom, Focus Springfield. And I will follow up either through Mr. Dave Maynard. And share any conversations that are appropriate with the administration to give for for stimulation out to the association. There are no other questions or comments. I want to send my personal and sincere thanks to all involved and. And for Mr. Maynard and Mrs. Greer, particularly as Mr. Maynard is the one who and I believe Mr. Griffin are the ones who originally reached out to me and and brought this this opportunity for me to be involved. So thank you to everybody. And if there's no objections, I'd like to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, everyone be blessed.
Thank you, everyone.
Be healthy. Thank you.